I don't know.
Okay.
You're on.
All right, we're ready to call the meeting to order. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Albright, if you could call roll. Spout, here. Mrs. Scott, here. Mr. Leoni, here. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Scott? Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
And myself, here. We, here. Okay. Procedures for public participation. Prepared statements that are to be read to the board should have a copy presented to the board president prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphone and stating your name and address and signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, comments will be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. Okay, and for announcements, there is an agenda edit to, an attachment was added for two, three, four, under finance, is that right? No?
It's under
Programs.
Programs.
Under three A?
Five.
Five. And the agenda, the item was already there and the attachment has been added. And we have the superintendent's report. Oh, we don't, and we don't have an executive session afterwards, so, correct. And now for the superintendent's report, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. Just an update on the district buildings rightsizing FAQ document. Continue to update that as additional questions come in from the survey inquiries. I received a total of two additional respondents with three additional questions, which were added to the FAQ document. That document currently has 26 questions that are addressed. We'll continue to update those as we get additional inquiries. As far as update on our COVID-19 reported cases, typically Monday is when we get the lion's share of our reported cases coming off the weekend. However, with our not having students in school today because we've been a teacher in service, we anticipate that Monday will be supplanted with tomorrow morning what we usually see at the beginning of the week. However, I do need to share that last Monday was lower as far as reported cases than the previous Monday, which was lower than the Monday before that. So it appears as though we're trending in the direction of getting less reported cases, which therefore decreases the number of requisite quarantines. The final item is just to bring to the attention of the board that the, there was a press release issued today by the governor's office, and it was about 1:30, with regard to the state anticipating returning the K-12 masking requirement to the local leaders in January 17th of 2022. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. All right. Moving on to finance. Got course and credit approvals. Anybody want to talk about that? Okay, any public comment on finance? Okay, moving on to programs. I think that that's going to be what we're going to have most of our comments about, most of our discussion about here. The district reorg was presented to us forty, forty-five days ago, is that right? Or thirty days ago-ish?
Yeah. Forty-five, sixty, yeah.
Okay, I sent the board an email just asking you to take a look at the Q and A that has been posted on the school's website, just to familiarize yourself with the questions that people in the public were asking. I didn't know if anybody wanted to have discussion about moving. The key points would be to move in order to better utilize the space that we have to bring the fifth grade up to the middle school, which would create a two-grade lower house of five and six on the bottom, on the, on the first floor of the middle school, and an upper house of seven and eight on the top floor. We would move second grade to the IC, so that building would be second, third, and fourth. And we would create a primary center that would be just kindergarten and first grade, but it would enable us to create room for all of our classes instead of just four of our classes being full-day kindergarten. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns?
Good thing.
Okay, I, I just assumed that we would have like some discourse on it. I mean, I know we're not voting on it today. We would be voting on it next month. I mean, late, at the end of the month, but.
Julia, I know that it was discussed on keeping them like on the first floor and the second floor, how, I mean, but we didn't really get a real concise conclusion on that because nobody was really sure, did we know yet, like how we're really doing that to make sure that, you know, pretty big difference between the lowest grade and the top grade.
Yeah, the intent is for the lower floor to be housing our fifth and sixth graders. There will be, the minimal crossover would be during the encore of related studies, courses. For example, your health, because add your art and your music, so on and so forth. But the fifth grade would be housed on one section of the lower floor, sixth grade on another section of the lower floor. So even their interactions between classes, their core content classes, will even, be even more minimized because it will be, with like fifth graders, their locker will be in the same location as well. Same with the sixth, and then seventh and eighth on the top floor.
Well?
Just a comment on full-day kindergarten coming back. I think that's a big achievement. It's something that was pulled out during times where we were cutting program and sorry to see it go and sorely missed.
Mm-hmm. Me too. Anyone else? Kind of thing you want to talk about? So if that is approved, well, the way we'll probably do this is we'll, we'll kind of take this one one at a time when we vote on, when we vote on these. Because if that happens, then we would be making some changes to the job description of both the chief academic affairs officer and the elementary principal for the, for the primary center. Because there could, you know, we, we can make better use of their talents and their time if, if there's fewer kids in that primary school building. But we can't vote on that until we decide if we're going to write, vote yea or nay on the rightsizing. The high school course selection catalog is also on this, which includes the changes to the art pathway, the art pathway, changing the requirement for art to get to AP from four to three years, is that correct? Adding a music course, oh, three to two, all right, good. And, and then adding oppression music course. And there were a couple of other things that I don't remember. That, that's all included in this course selection.
So the changes were business refining office facility, regular enrollment, music, substituting music appreciation for the whole of music and adding percussion ensemble. Physical education was added to the development force and road lighting was added, sometimes formerly the AP sense.
And we would normally have a course selection, not, not, it's not quite a course selection catalog, but we would normally have a roadmap for what course selection would look like at the middle school at this, around this time. But Mr. Towers hasn't devoted, since we don't know if we're talking about a three-grade building or a four-grade building, he, he's, we're putting that off until probably February. Anybody have any comments or questions on the, on the high school course catalog? And then the partnership with MCCC. I had it explained to me already once. I'm going to ask you again to explain, the MOU with Montgomery County Community College?
Oh, yes, yes. So that is like the program where we have students who become credit proficient and are at risk of dropping out of school. We have a partnership with Montgomery County Community College where students can obtain both to get back on track through high school credit and terms in college credit at the same time as they graduate with years and actually have a leg up.
Okay. All right. All right.
Can I ask a question real quick on the organization structure?
Yes.
Is there a way that I can be sent to some of these top tiers, like what their job descriptions are?
Absolutely.
So like anything that's structured?
I think that, I think that the, all of the job descriptions, so first of all, some of the job descriptions that are listed are up for possibly being changed, right? So they'll have the old ones. But I believe that it is in a file that we have access to on our shared, our shared folders in Chrome. But Dr. Cooper will send you a link.
Are you looking for any in particular? You say top tier, you're looking?
So I'm looking at like all those like top ones where it's like the sister, assistant to the superintendent, assistant superintendent of the school, chief academic officer, like all those director, like all the director positions. I know like principals and stuff too, but it's more of those higher-up ones. And I just kind of wanted to get the job descriptions of each of them.
So you're looking for, just to clarify, the, the director positions and the cabinet level positions?
Correct. Thank you.
Knowing, of course, that in two weeks, if we vote to approve the new assistant to superintendent for academic affairs, that, that's going to be different. Okay. Yep. So any other comments, questions from the board on anything under programs? Any public comment on programs? Okay. Under personnel, retirements, leaves, appointments. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board?
I'd just like to say that two of my three children have a sister.
Okay.
And she will be sorely missed, which does well. I'm sad that I can't have both one more time.
Anyone else? Any public comment on personnel? Moving on to secretary's correspondence. Mr. Scott is not here today. We had maybe five emails that I've received about various issues in the school, mostly related in some way or another to COVID. And I tried to respond to all of them. BCIU report, Mr. Miller?
Yes, there was a meeting on October 21st. Nothing real exciting. There were just approvals of different agreements with some of the schools for Title I and other internal contract agreements. Nothing really of interest for us.
Okay. Any comments, questions, concerns for Mr. Miller? Moving on to BCT board, Ms. Thompson?
We met October 27th. They said they had great enrollment for this year. Their open house November 10th for the West, November 11th for the East. Next meeting is December 9th for reorganization.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Moving on to the student board reports. Oh, and if we could be introduced to our, our newest member?
Yes. All right. Do you want me to introduce her?
Yep, yeah, if you don't mind.
So are you a new school board member?
My name is Laura Fries.
Moving on to the primary center. On the academic side, their morning is going very well. Students are progressing through this year. Extracurriculars, they participated in practice for the week and the district will lie better in the situation here. Culturally, they are planning for their upcoming ball festival, and that's something that they're very excited about since they weren't able to do that last year.
Okay, for the AIC, academically, the fourth graders are concerned about when transitioning to the middle school early will mean for recess. Extracurriculars, morning announcements are conducted by the kids. Closely, this school participated in Red Ribbon Week, which is the week of October 25th, and there will be a school quality survey conducted the first two weeks of November for the students, parents, and staff, carefully manufactured to answer questions about what everyone wants to see in the school.
Okay, so for the middle school, our academic, there's nothing. There were four. For extracurricular, the middle school has hosted community day, with selected students to share their perspectives and embarrass companies to help improve the social and emotional environment in the school. For cultural, the middle school participated in Red Ribbon.
And finishing up with the high school, academics. Students interested in BCTC are preparing applications for the December deadline. Extracurriculars, fall sports are coming to an end. They have teams that they carry well this year. The field hockey team won the division. Girls soccer qualified for the district playoffs. Boys soccer is making district playoffs. Football is, it was in the district's playoffs. They just had a game last Friday. Boys and girls cross country teams qualify already for the district championship. But the high school also participates in the district. That includes high school report, part of the state report.
Thank you and welcome, Ms. Fries. Any questions for our student board reps? Legislative report, Mr. Strobel?
We meet quarterly, so a couple of months I might have nothing to report, and we actually meet tomorrow, but.
Okay.
We got it set with their AM with.
Are there any other board reports? Okay, public comments on representative, presentations by the board? Enrollment numbers are posted. Any, any board members have any questions for the administration? Any public comment on enrollment? Curriculum and instruction, Ms. Albright? Yeah. We last talked, we're talking about the K-12 math committee is being formed, the members are being sent out. We talked about course restructuring of Spanish arts, physical education, business and music, and we talked about integrated learning, but I'm sure Preston will want to expand on that.
We just had a service, actually, on the day, so teachers are working on integrated learning. We'll continue to build that out. And, well, just one other item is the comprehensive plan. We are a B3 school in the state for the planning, and the state's pushed back through COVID a couple of months, but Ms. Albright is leading out on that, and we need to bring moves and plans together which reach across the spectrum of the arts and music, which, like, those will be coming up next month.
Okay. And next curriculum instruction committee meeting is the 22nd. Extracurricular, we just had the meeting today, and Mr. Miller couldn't make it, and Ms. Bell ran the meeting.
Yes, it was the first time for the high school, but we care sports, we need districts for all of our activities. We are still in need of a JV girls' basketball coach and a middle school girls' basketball coach, and then the mock tryout club, which we put in, they're to become an official club. So we currently have 14 members, and we have a KAR association that they compete with every year. They've placed second place for two years in the rest accounting for the last two years.
Yeah, the kids and the advisors gave a, gave a good, 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 well-reasoned persuasive presentation. And next meeting will be December, so we're having a meeting, and that's the meeting December 6th, right before the reorg? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any public comment on extracurricular? Facilities and transportation, Mr. Strobel?
Yes, we had our meeting this evening. We have a new facilities and transportation director coming, Ryan Polo, who starts on Monday, will be introduced to the center next meeting. There's an update on the IC roof update. There's a finish from Wednesday. There's a need for a couple, need pumps over in the middle school and high school area. And then there's a rooftop unit in MBC that's going bad. And there was a comment about staffing for SSC, but they're down like a lot of other companies are, but the comment was how well they're doing despite of the low of people that have no complaints, boards complaining, doing a great job. So that was, we'll put out there. Good stuff.
Right. Next meeting, December 6th?
Yes.
All right. Oh, and you will not be here. We'll, we'll figure it out. Okay. Any, any questions for Mr. Strobel from the board? Any public comment on facilities? Moving on to finance, Mr. Miller?
Yes, we had a brief meeting on October 25th, and talked about the vision insurance options, looking at changing vision plans potentially to get a better plan at the same cost. And we had an audit update. It was taking longer than normal, but I believe since then we've had some good news in the audit. The big topic was the budget meeting, the workshop was scheduled for January 6th.
Okay, and we will be having a budget workshop January 6th. And as I say every year, that even if you are not on the finance committee, any, any board members who want to attend, please attend. It does help to see the nuts and bolts of that process, and public is invited as well. So, any public comment? Oh, any questions for Mr. Miller from the board? Any public comment? Okay, policy review. We did not have a policy meeting today. Our next meeting is December 6th. So the first reading, second reading are listed there. Is there anything of concern, Mr. Hurley, that you wanted to make sure to highlight, or are we good?
We're good.
Okay. At, at any point, if any of the board members had any questions about these that you needed to ask Mr. Scott or Mr. Hurley, you can always email him or bring him up at the next meeting. And any public comment on policy? Okay, moving on to technology, Mr. Strobel?
We did not have an October meeting.
Oh, that's right.
So the next meeting will be November 27th.
All right. Okay. Any, any public comment on that? Okay, so moving on to old business. Meeting minutes are listed? Any concern? Public comment? New business? Is there any?
I would like to bring up the current quarantining process happening in our schools, its ineffectiveness, and the fact that it's being interpreted incorrectly, and that majority of our pet sleep schools are handling it much differently. This is the second or third time, I'm not sure, one of my kids has been quarantined, but none of them have ever been sick. But I even have the negative test, but I wasn't real happy about getting it, because I don't actually even like that. But she still can't go back to school tomorrow. Here's the thing, she was wearing her mask, she's in first grade, she follows the rules for the whole day. Why, the entire class being quarantined, as well as a secondary class last week, and two weeks before that, an entire bus, which by the way, you have to wear a mask to get on bus. If they're three feet apart with a mask on, they should not be quarantined. You are affecting these kids. They need to be in school.
Truth.
I've tried to talk to you guys, and it's, it's not working. So now we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it publicly.
I, I can share that we follow, we follow the PA HAN, which references the CDC recommendations as we do with our medical professionals, which is our certified school nurses. So when it's identified as a communicable disease and the results are quaranting, that's, that's what we're following. And, and if it's the intent of the board, or the board's directing something otherwise to change in our health and safety plan, certainly that can be done. However, I would request, I would.
Then they'll go with lice and all that other stuff.
Yeah, I would request.
I don't care.
Well, I would request that we get direction on that as well.
And the last time that we discussed masking, when we made it optional, I remember, everyone here probably remembers us discussing this. And we, I remember being told that if kids were masking, there was many to quarantine. But now, all of a sudden, it's gone backwards the other direction. I mean, I know kids personally in the district who are suffering because they've been out twice already for quarantine.
True. Right. My kids twice.
My, the difference between lice and other home wreaths that we may or may not have is that we aren't wearing masks during those times. So part of the logic behind wearing the mask was, as Mrs. Leoni said, that if we were wearing the mask, which is what other districts do, then it would prevent the quarantine.
And that's the only reason that I voted for wearing masks was to prevent this nonsense, which isn't actually prevented, so.
I agree. I want to, I move to change the health and safety plan. I don't know how you do it, Julia. I don't know how you go to say, how many people want to say that, but that's what I'm doing.
So if we want, so if we, if we want to vote to change the health and safety plan.
To follow other PA districts that aren't quarantining masses of children.
Or wearing masks.
Which I sent over the, I sent over the language of, you know, if you're wearing a mask, if you're wearing a mask, you're definitely going to be quarantined.
Yeah, we would have to change our health and safety plan to do that.
Yeah, I, I would like to.
I, this was not, so this meeting was not advertised as a voting meeting. We would have to vote on it in two weeks.
I know, it's like, maybe it's.
So we would have to vote on it in two weeks. So, so if we wanted to do that, we would have to draft something and send it out amongst the board, and then see if that's what we want to vote on, and then vote on it next, next week? Or two weeks from now?
Yeah.
Vote on it right now because.
No, I understand. I understand.
My first grader will sit there and get dumber tomorrow, sitting at home with me when I take off of work, but whatever, that's fine.
Yeah. So that's, that's, and this is, you know, it's an informal vote, so our, we'd like to.
Yes.
We'd like to do that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Do we have the same specifics on some of the changes that we want to make?
Yeah, I have, I have absolutely the same.
I just want to take a look out on the streets of the change.
Well, that's, that's, that's what I meant to do. This district has seven times the amount of kids we have, and we have like a 2% quarantine rate of like maybe one in every five classes. In no way have we ever, ever quarantined an entire class because nobody's sitting an entire class, because nobody's sitting there without masks.
I understand it, and I've read all the emails and texts that are going back and forth, and all the attachments, so I'm just saying, we're going to vote next week on it, is there any opportunity?
I totally agree.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to do it soon.
Is there any way we can get some of the information ahead of time, so we can read it?
Yep.
Look at it, digest some of it, we might have some opinions that, I don't want to make an opinion on it, or jump in, because I've read earlier that piece of information.
Right, do you want to read it over?
I agree with being able to not have to quarantine a whole bus, but I agree with, you know, but I want to look at all the pieces, not just some of the pieces, you know, if we have, if we have a positive, if we have a negative text come back, you know, what are some of your examples?
So just, just be aware that if, if.
I'm asking for information.
If we, if we do do this, it would be not what the administration would be recommending, I'm just letting you know.
Right.
So, so what I'm, so what I'm asking is that if maybe a couple of us could get together and put together a five, 10 minute presentation to do to the rest of the board, so that we're all being presented with the same information, does that make sense? We can, we can work that out, so we can do that for next, next board meeting?
Right.
Does that make sense? I think that's the easiest way to make sure that we all have the same.
You don't, you don't need to be involved, that's what we started.
I think that's the best way to make sure, I, I would, you know, when we do our research, you know, other school districts, you know, other school districts that are not in Berks County do have other authorities to call upon that we don't, like Montgomery County has their own Department of Health, that, and that can sometimes override what the Pennsylvania Department of Health says, so, you know, I would prefer that we try to stay within either our county, I don't know, does Lancaster County have their own Department of Health? I don't think they do.
They do not.
Yeah, so if we stay in those areas that don't have another, so, so we have the same overriding authorities that those other schools do, when we're looking at what we're, what we're considering.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely, and again, presenting those things to the administration, hearing what they have to convince, why.
Right.
We're doing what we're doing versus when, when there's information out there available, that's conversation, I think it's important to do that, we really do.
Right, okay, so we'll have, so we'll have that, so we'll have that on the agenda for next, I mean, if we can't come to an agreement, we can also have more than one options for us to vote on, maybe, I guess, we could do that, making it up as we go along, that's fine.
Julie, can I ask a question? With Governor Wolf coming out today with the January 17th date, when are we as a board going to go back and discuss in that state?
Um, yeah, I would expect that we would probab, well, first of all, our, the way that our health and safety plan reads, if a, if a mandate disappears, the masks go away on that same day, is that my understanding of the way it's written?
With regards to masking, yes.
Masking itself, that's all, that's it. So, so the way our, the way our mask, I'm sorry, the way our health and safety plan is written on the day that a mask requirement came down from Pennsylvania State leaves, it's gone. So if we wanted to have a discussion about whether or not we wanted to keep it in place, we would have to have that, we could have that discussion, obviously, at any time, but we would probably discuss it the first meeting in January to see if that's something that we want to do, and then we could, we could discuss it later if we decided once masks were gone, or once they were optional, that we wanted to do something different, we would have that discussion like later in January or in February, does that make sense?
It does, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm thinking that we would probably not be having that discussion about what to do post-January 17th until January, whatever it is, our first meeting, that's my thought, as, you know, unless, unless something comes up that the board really wants to discuss it earlier.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, now I have my work, that's fine. So, any public comment on what we just discussed under new business? Or you can wait until like five seconds from now, and you can just, because you can give presentations on any issue, starting now.
I want to take the time to congratulate you all on your reelection campaigns, I'm learning more and more that God supports leaders and he roams in us. As I mentioned in the last meeting, I campaigned in my neck of the woods, I met a lot of great people who have large concerns regarding the decision making from the board. As a testament, the people of Amity made it quite clear what they will and will not tolerate in leaders, no matter the political party line. Parents want choice, will not tolerate their constitutional rights being trampled on illegally, do not want their kids masked, and definitely do not want them vaccinated. They do not appreciate tyrannical decision making coming from both the Wolf administration nor the Biden administration. I met an older couple, and they mentioned, we no longer go to the school board meetings, they're not for us. They will make whatever decisions they feel like maybe at the country club, they're clicky. Sadly, I did not see them at the polls. Then I met a couple with no children, not understanding why they are required to pay school property tax if they have no kids in the school district, not to mention the peer disgust and the increase in taxes now that hit the highest increase within the last 10 years. I saw them at the polls, and I knew how they voted. I had a couple pray over me at the polls and thank me for trying to make a difference in our school district, and they blessed me more than you can even imagine. What I saw God do on Tuesday is indicative of what he plans on doing should leaders he appoints do not stand for the truth. John 15 quotes Jesus, "I am the true grapevine, my father is the gardener, he cuts off every branch of mine that doesn't produce fruit, and he prunes the branches that do produce fruit, so they will produce even more. Remain in me, and I'll remain in you. For a branch cannot produce fruit if it's severed from the vine, and you cannot be fruitful unless you remain in me. Anyone who does not remain in me is thrown away like a useless branch in thither. Such branches are gathered into a pile and burned. But if you remain in me and my words remain in you, you may ask for anything you want, and it will be granted. When you produce much fruit, you are my true disciples. This brings great glory to my father." You may be asking, why am I quoting Jesus? Well, as a nation, we have spent the last few decades removing him from our culture, schools, and lives.
Truth.
What we see today is blind leading the blind and producing no fruit whatsoever. We have lost our way as a nation, and we can't see the difference between right and wrong as a country, let alone as a human race.
Truth.
As a disciple in Jesus, I am asked to have mercy on all of us, because most of us, including myself, do not know what we're doing wrong. I ask him to raise leaders who will rule justly and be rooted in the ultimate truth, which is under God. I ask him to bless our feeble efforts to get candidates in, and to change the hearts of all us on the board to resemble a heart after him. I know you're looking at us as annoying, making accusations that we insult you and are bringing nothing but trouble to you, that is the complete opposite of what we're doing. There has been a firemen in every single one of us by the words of God.
Your three minutes are up, so you want.
And that justice and righteousness be restored in our community.
We are gonna, go ahead.
What you're feeling is the move of God.
We're gonna go ahead and adjourn, you want to turn off.
The lack of judgment, unrighteousness, and is calling.